Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, city officials, and also our home audience. Right about I've got to probably apologize to our home audience. For whatever reason, I came in and our video is not picking up very well and I tried to look at it and see and I can't find find a solution for it at this point. But we'll try to make improvements before next meeting. This is our September 26th City Council meeting and we have six items on our agenda this evening. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Paulson, please continue with the roll call of numbers.
Clay.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Florina.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Pearl.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. At this time, if we would, please all stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The minutes of the previous meeting have been distributed for review. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes? I do, Mrs. Neal. Seconded by Mr. Florina. Roll call on that motion, please.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
And the minutes from the previous meeting have been accepted. At this time, we have our committee reports. Anybody want to commit? Justice Patrick.
Thank you, President Arnold. The Utilities Committee has not been on tonight's agenda. I just get two announcements Thursday this week at 4:30 in the mayor's conference room. It's a Utility Rate Review Committee meeting. And the other announcement is utilities bill you can now accept credit card payments.
Really?
Yeah, so that was a major step for them. But that's all I've got. Thank you.
So that's as of now?
Yes.
Fantastic. Pat, just to mention, you sent me something earlier. I know this isn't a committee report. I know if you're using your business on the electronics pickup, you want to do that later. Anybody else stand up for committee report? Yes, Mr. Pearl.
The Finance Committee has three items on tonight's agenda. Item number two is at first reading and it is an ordinance to appropriate $40,000 for income tax refunds. We had a large income tax refund come in at the end of last year, in 2015. It was paid out in January of 2016. It was not included in the original budget for 2016, so we need to make this adjustment. Item number four, which is to accept $12,300 from Jefferson Healthcare for the city's participation in the biometric screening and appropriate $2,300 of said funds. This was used, this money that is given to us by the insurance company, to develop a program for wellness within the city. And so at the appropriate time, I will ask that we accept this money and allocate it so that program can be funded and waived three read rule. Item number six is at first reading and it is to authorize the tax levies for the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, and for the fiscal year beginning January 1st of 2017, as determined by the Budget Commission, and certify said levies to the county auditor. And this is our annual procedure. And at the appropriate time, I would again respectfully ask that we consider waiving the three read rule. I would also like to announce that the Finance Committee will be meeting Monday at 7:00 PM here in council chambers to discuss a few items that we have on the agenda, consisting of the modernization of the website, appropriation of the money to get the land bank started, and for the other various allocations to finish up the year. So those will be the items that will be on the agenda. With that, concludes my report. Thank you.
That's October 3rd.
October 3rd.
October 3rd.
October 3rd, Monday, October 3rd at 7:00 here in council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Any other committee reports? Yes, Mrs. Neal.
Development Committee has one item on the agenda. It's item number three for first reading. It's to appropriate $12,000 from unappropriated HUD funds for use on home projects through the CHIP grant. And these funds were inadvertently admitted from the carryover list from 2015 to 2016. And it's necessary to appropriate them for an upcoming project. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's the end.
That's it. I was trying to get the camera on and they went all the way around the room about three times, so follows on us. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Florina.
Thank you, President Arnold. Safety Services believe that item one would be partial to it. We did have a meeting that was on the purchase of a rescue squad. But as far as my question on the issuance of the plan, it was also with other vehicles, so would this be tied in completely for item one?
Is the question that the borrowing is one piece of legislation?
Correct.
Yeah, so they, I guess the question is can they be voted on separately? Is that basically the question?
Should they be or, you know, I mean, void as just one piece?
The note that will be borrowed is one piece of legislation there. If we think that there's an issue with the passage, I think?
I don't, I don't see a problem with the passage. It's just in?
So as presented?
Correct.
It would be together?
Correct. That is, yes.
My, my point.
I'm in support of both. So that's, I'm just reporting on part or portion of the safety service.
Essentially, the one piece of legislation authorized is the purchase of the?
Fantastic. And is, I will wait for recommendation to see if this is something that needs to be waived the three read rule because there are pieces of equipment that are essential to upcoming events and activity to the city. So at the appropriate time, I would suggest that we waive the three read rule. Thank you for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Florina. Any other committee reports? Yes, Mr. Pearl.
City Services has one item on tonight's agenda, item number five, an ordinance authorizing the hiring for six seasonal employees to support the fall leaf pickup schedule and appropriating $23,500 to fund those positions for eight to 10 weeks. The committee met on September 19th to discuss this item, assignment number 16-096. We also discussed the mayor's proposed plans for fall leaf pickup, which included the purchase of two leaf vacuums. That purchase, supported by the committee, is part of the funds associated with item number one, so I ask for your favorable support of that ordinance as well. As part of the mayor's plan, a pickup schedule will be published in order to give residents a better understanding of when the leaves in their neighborhood will be cleared. These pickups will be scheduled and announced, similar to the process that we followed for the large item pickup this past spring. The schedule will guarantee two separate pickup dates for each area to ensure that as many of the leaves as possible are cleared before winter sets in. If you look around, you will notice that leaves are beginning to fall, so in an effort to ensure that we do not fall behind schedule, at the appropriate time, I will ask for the waiver of the three read rule. And I would also support waiving the three read rule for item number one. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pearl. Any other committee reports? Not seen any at this time. We will move on to reports from our officials. Mayor Feeny.
Thank you, President Arnold. I'll start with the item Councilman Clay just touched on. First, I'll start with the squad purchase. Squad purchase was actually authorized in the 2016 operating budget. There was a $50,000 down payment appropriated. This is essentially authorizing the borrowing and the payment plan. The second portion of item number one is the aforementioned purchase of two leaf vacuums and the hoppers that fit on the back of dump trucks. First, let me apologize. My preference would have been to get this in front of council much earlier in the year. I realize that this puts council in a bit of a bind because of the season. But I would like to thank Safety and Service Director Carmen for the thorough work that he did on this job. The, the research on leaf vacuums is harder than what we might imagine. The feedback that we got from suppliers of those vacuums is harder than we might imagine. You have in your packet, or in the committee assignment packet, had three different quotes. The ones that we decided on are the only ones that are on the state bid list. They appear to provide the best value, best discount, and a turnaround time of two weeks. I would also support the waiver of the three read rule, although I would not be opposed to scheduling special meetings if more reads are preferred or necessary. I think the feedback that I've received, both after the presentation of this committee assignment and just during the year, leaves are one of the main things that we get a call about. And I think that this plan is one that will be able to fix that problem really for the foreseeable future. So again, I apologize for that late presentation and I thank you for your consideration on that topic. Item number three, just to follow up on Councilwoman Neal's presentation, that money is essentially money that is generated by that program and it's within one of the HUD funds. It's just a matter of bringing that money forward and appropriating it. It doesn't affect the general fund or any of the fund. So I'd also support waiver of the three read rule on that topic. On item number four, the past few years, we've had $10,000 available to us for wellness, so that's what we appropriated this year. And it's always been reimbursed by our healthcare management company. This year, the reimbursement went over the $10,000, and so we had the $10,000 appropriated. Now we're accepting the $12,300 and we're appropriating the difference. So that's why we're not accepting and appropriating the full $12,300. I would also ask for your affirmative vote on the waiver of three read rule on that topic. And if any of you participated in the biometric screening, those gift cards should be surgery. Finally, number five, number five is really sort of the companion piece for number one. This is what we have put together as a proposal for the best plan to effectively pick up during, during the season. And it essentially is necessary to execute that plan, so I'd also ask for your support on that topic. That concludes my legislative portion. The only other thing I wanted to mention was the really impressive work of our police department and other safety forces, the weekend of the 16th through the 18th. That weekend, there were 30 warrant arrests. There were 28 cases as a result of those arrests presented to grand jury. Of those 28, there were 28 indictments. Special thanks to the Marshal Service, the DEA, the Highway Patrol. We also had approximately 50 people working that weekend. Walmart, Roosters, the Seven Miles of Oak House all provided food, nourishment, water for those folks that weekend. Also like to thank Safety and Service Director Carmen for his efforts to bring that group together, Councilman Florina for his efforts. It was, it was something that we kind of knew was, was coming. We were getting a little anxious and excited to see it, and it was a really effective weekend. It really, I think, goes to show what we've accomplished when we work together and work a little bit smarter. So just very appreciative of those efforts. There was, there was more that followed and some nice work by the Sheriff's Department as well, so it was just a really effective weekend. We saw a noticeable drop, actually, that weekend in overdoses, so we'll just continue that good work. And I want to just want to say publicly, thank you to all of us who are home. With that, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Feeny. Our auditor, Ms. Sputnay.
Item number one on the agenda, to provide issuance of $1,750 for vehicle, and then that would need to get financing for, as the mayor had discussed, two leaf vacuums and a squad. Payment terms would be at one year, we would pay our first payment for, we would pay four years, one annual payment for four years, with the first payment being due in March of next year, which will allow for everyone to include that in their 2017 budget. Item number two, as Mr. Pearl stated, we received a pretty big tax refund that, when we had together, a pretty big tax refund that came in at the end of 2015 that we paid out in January 2016, so we just need to ask for additional funding to cover that because that was not budgeted for in 2016. Item number six on the agenda, that is annual resolution that we have to have completed in time by October 1st, so I ask for your support on that as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Sputnay. And our all director, Ms. Westwood.
Thank you, President Arnold. I don't have any report on this.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I will, I don't really have any major announcements to make. I'll give you an update on our air conditioning units, and I talked to them today. The equipment is in. They are ready to install. They are finishing up another job and said that they might start on at the end of this week or first part of next week. So when that happens, I'll get the coordination together with our city, city services director and our engineer and anybody that needs to be involved in it. So next meeting, hopefully, we will have climate control in here. That would be nice. The only other thing I have to announce, I know the video is poor quality this evening and I don't know if my mother's made it home from having dinner yet or not, but if she is, she's probably out there watching. Today is her birthday, so I'd like just to say happy birthday to her, and she turned nine and four today. So anyway, happy birthday, Mom. At this point, we move to our audience participation. We have implemented assignment sheet for audience participation, which is on the podium out there. If, if your name is called, just move up to the microphone. Council Level 21 does limit each speaker to a five-minute presentation and a total of a limitation of 15 minutes per subject. I will silently indicate when you have approximately one minute left, so you can wrap up your, summarize your presentation. Anybody who wishes to speak that's not on the list can. You're welcome to, but we do need your name and your address when you go up to the microphone. I will make a little bit of more of a statement that, that it's fully open to anybody to be able to talk. We have free speech in here. However, limitations on people getting into defamation of character or attacking any individual or group or organization, name-calling, things like that, I think moves past the right of free speech, at least in these chambers here. And if anybody gets to that point, I will cut you off immediately. But anyway, at that point, does anybody have any audience participation they'd like to? Anybody like to stick to the evening? Not seeing so? We move on to old business. Anybody have any old business they'd like to bring up? No old business? Petitions and correspondence that we're receiving quite a lot?
In keeping with what everyone else is doing, I have nothing to report.
Nothing? Okay. Then we move into new business. Does anybody have any new business they'd like to run? Justice Patrick?
I just wanted to announce, and I sent it to all council members, the Ross County Litter Control's heavier electronics recycling event, and this is this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 down in the Octangy Park over by Diamond One, so it's a good chance to get rid of your electronics stuff. The only thing they'll charge for is if it's a TV or a CTR, or, I'm sorry, CRT monitor, but everything else, if you've got card game cartridges, game system scanners, DVDs, you know, all that stuff, it's a good way to get rid of this.
Question on televisions? Is there a limit to size?
No.
Okay, so for the $10, you can do as big of a TV as you can get over there?
Yeah.
Good to know.
Put them out at your curb. First of all, I have one day to go.
That's fine. We'll go quick.
I'm hosting my neighborhood office hours tomorrow afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Glade, which is 141 University Drive. I'll be in the Chillicothe room. I just welcome anybody 1:00 to 3:00 tomorrow.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mrs. Neal?
I just have one item I wanted to share, and this is from the Downtown Associates. They are sponsoring a scarecrow contest, and it's open to all businesses, organizations, or clubs. So if anybody could enter for a $10 registration fee. Their plan is to have the scarecrows decorate the downtown. There's a $10 registration fee. If anybody's interested in that, they can contact me. I have registration forms. Should be a fun, fun contest and kind of dress up the downtown for, for the autumn season.
Thank you, Mrs. Neal. Anybody else have any new business they'd like to bring up? Yes, Mr. Pearl.
Thank you, President Arnold. At our last council meeting, we heard some additional public comments regarding the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance that's currently in the Community Affairs Committee. Just as in the past, those comments were directed at an individual in our community and her email to Adasso board members on July 19th. Now, this ordinance is very important to a number of individuals across the city, and therefore, I believe it is crucial for us to get it right as we move forward in addressing that assignment. As I stated at our July 11th meeting, it is our responsibility as city council to protect the rights of all citizens of Chillicothe. And as we work to do this, we must be certain that we, as the elected representatives of this community, do not confuse the facts. It is equally important for us to ensure that our public record, our official record, is true to that fact associated with those, with that issue. And this is quoted directly from our minutes from the last meeting, and a public statement was made that read, "On July 19th, 2016, in an email communication to members of her organization, Ms. Tammy Eleanardo, a chairperson of the Economic Development Alliance of Southern Ohio, sent an email to Adasso members soliciting support for a petition opposing a nondiscrimination ordinance." Now, I'm sorry, but that is confusing the facts on that email. And it appears that not only is council trying to be, not only is this individual trying to confuse council, but maybe even members of the general public. I have read Ms. Eleanardo's email. It was included in an email that I believe went to all council members. And if you read it, then this shouldn't surprise anyone, the Gazette has already reported on this. Ms. Eleanardo emailed the Adasso board members, not only the petition, but also the proposed ordinance. She asked them to read both documents and then form their own opinions. That language does not seem to imply that she was soliciting support for the petition. If so, then that would also seem to imply that she was soliciting support for the ordinance. And you cannot solicit support for an ordinance and a petition that opposes that ordinance within the same email. She couldn't possibly be asking the board members to support both of those documents, so we have to take her at her word. And in the email, she says, in black and white, "Read both documents and form your own opinions." Now, I want to state again, this issue is very important to a number of people across our community, and that's why I believe that we need to make sure that we are dealing with the facts and not confusing them here in city council. Mrs. Eleanardo did exactly what her board should expect her to do. She informed them of political activity within the city that has the potential to impact the work they do in promoting local economic development. She offered them both the petition and the proposed ordinance that was before the committee and asked them to form their own opinions. And to me, that does not sound like she is soliciting support for either document, and we need to make sure that our record is very clear on that.
Is that written now?
Sure do, and I will get the pictures.
It's locked in. It's all one, right? All right. Anybody else have any other new business they'd like to bring up? Not seen any. We will move on to committee assignments and meeting dates. I have had quite a flurry of committee assignments come in to me last week, considering I was actually on vacation, but I kept it pretty busy. We've, since the last meeting, I'll real quickly kind of go through these. We had the request for the Ford Rescue Squad, which is on tonight's agenda. Request to accept the $12,300 in our participation with biometric screening, again on the agenda. Request to appropriate $127,100 for various purposes for the rest of the year. Request to review the compensation of the service, civil service commissioners, and then along with that, possible legislation to adjust the compensation. Request for legislation authorizing the tax levies for the city, again on our schedule this evening. Request to appropriate a check in the amount of $895.50 to reimburse the department for overtime, expenses that they had teaching CPR classes with the transit department. Request to accept the check and appropriate to the sewer and treatment in the amount of $6,061.57 due to a refund from a vendor. Request for legislation to hire temporary workforce in the Utilities Department to accommodate health-related absence. Request for legislation to create a court, a position within the Chillicothe Municipal Court. Request for legislation to modernize, I have these three this evening, modernize our city website to a more user-friendly website interface. Request for legislation to appropriate $40,000 for the initial start-up budget for the land bank. That money comes back to us as reimbursed as we use it. And request for legislation to authorize the city to enter into an elderly and disabled transit fare assistant program grant contract with ODOT. And that's what, that's what we've had since the last meeting. And committee dean, Mr. Pearl mentioned that next Monday here in chambers, 7 o'clock, October 3rd, he has some assignments to take care of that evening. With that, we move on to legislation. Mr. Paulson, item number one, whenever you're ready.
First reading of an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $250,000 vehicle and equipment acquisition bonds and declaring an emergency. First read.
Mr. Florina.
Thank you, President Arnold. Due to the sensitivity of the timeframe, considering we do need this equipment for things to run smoothly, as well as to replace the rescue unit that was put on the budget from last year, I would ask for your approval.
Have a motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on that motion.
Clay.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And we have waived the three read. Roll call on that ordinance, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And we have waived the three read rule. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And we have waived the three read rule. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And we have waived the three read rule. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And we have waived the three read. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number three.
First reading of an ordinance providing or appropriating $12,000 from unappropriated HUD funds for use on home projects through the CHIP grant and declaring emergency.
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Tatten?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number four, please.
First reading of an ordinance accepting $12,300 from Jefferson Healthcare for the city's participation in biometric screening, appropriating $2,300 of said funds, and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Cole? I would like to ask that we please waive the three read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Tatten?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number five, please.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the hiring of six full-time seasonal workers to support the fall leaf pickup schedule, appropriating $23,500 to fund said positions for a period of eight to 10 weeks, and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Clay?
For reasons stated in my report, I might pass the waiving the three read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mr. Florina. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Tatten?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number six, please.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the tax levies for the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2017, as determined by the Budget Commission, certifying said levies to the county auditor and declaring emergency. First reading.
This time, I would ask that we please waive the three read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Tatten?
Yes.
And the motion has passed. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Tatten?
Yes.
Actually, that's a resolution, and that resolution has passed. That concludes our legislation for this evening. If anybody has anything they'd like to add? If not, do we have a motion for adjournment by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Florina? Roll call on the motion to adjourn.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?